United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, is civil with liberty and justice for all.
Rule.
Alderman Tovin.
Here.
Alderman Jean Francois.
Here.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Alderwoman Ray.
Here.
Alderman Kleiner.
Here.
Alderman Green.
Here.
Alderman Witt.
Here.
Alderman Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
Forum is present.
Respondents?
This evening we have one standardized notice form for providing 30-day advance notice to a local municipality board for a liquor license for the Taco Factory.
Received and sent it to the police. For the good of the city.
Nobody signed up.
Nobody signed up. Remarks to the mayor. Be quick. Good evening. Couple items on the agenda tonight that I'd like to address. First is the ONW. There's a vote to modify the engineering contract, and hopefully you'll be supportive of that. Jacob has reviewed it. But also today at the Board of Estimants, we had the opening of the plumbing bids. And they did come in within the range that the engineers estimated to be about 2.25 million, I believe it was. So we are now ready to have the complete review of all four bids related to the ONW, and hopefully be awarding them very soon. So the project has come in a little bit higher than we expected totally, but within working distance. So we think we're gonna have a project moving forward. So hopefully we'll have some good news in the next couple of weeks. In regards to the Taco Factory liquor license, I wanted to publicly thank both Senator Scoofus and Assemblywoman Kay. As you know, that you are not allowed to have a liquor license within 200 feet of a church or a school in New York State. The state has modified that a bit, because there's three businesses in downtown, longtime businesses. Piccolos, Taco Factory, and Oak and Reed, that were not allowed to have liquor licenses because of their proximity to churches. The state has modified or has changed their process where they now allow a municipality such as Middletown to make a request on behalf of the licensee if impacted churches or schools are in agreement with the applicant moving from beer and wine to beer, wine, and liquor. And the cases of the three places that when we were notified of these potential, this option or possibility, Maria and I started working to put together, and with consultation from the chief too, some guidelines that we would need moving forward in order to even consider an application. These are individual applications. They are not, they don't go through the liquor authority first. They go first to the, to the city. The city then gets in contact with the impacted churches. The churches then send in the necessary documentation that they're okay with it. Then the city would have to say, we're okay with considering it, but you're gonna get final say, obviously, with the planning process. But more importantly, we felt it was important to establish criteria, which we've done. And we're gonna be sharing that, and hopefully you'll be adopting it as policy. Part of it is that they'd have to be a longstanding business, and I think the number we have were like five years, place with a track record, that they would have to be, I think it was 80, 20, 80% of their business would have to be food, not liquor, that there would be operating hours. So a lot of factors go into it. But for these three businesses, they meet all the criteria that we established, and we felt it was important to move forward. You know, it's a, the restaurant business is a very difficult business nowadays, especially the sole operators. And in order to be competitive in this environment, they would need to have these licenses. So these are special state legislation also. It's not an application to the New York State Liquor Authority. It's a separate bill that passes the Assembly after they review it, passes the Senate after they review it, and then it has to be signed by the governor. All three of those things happen, so I want to thank Governor Hochul, Senator Scoofus, and Assemblywoman Kay for all the work they did on that. Tomorrow also marks the start of the new school year here in Middletown, and I guess mostly, most of Orange County or a good part of Orange County. We want to remind everyone to drive safely, pay special attention around the schools. You'll notice on Grand Avenue and Irwin Avenue, there are new speed humps that were, appear to be working, at least based on some of the feedback from the neighborhoods that I'm getting. And ask people to obey all school bus zones laws, slow down in the school zones, and look out for our kids as we, as they return to school. We are all invested in the success of our students, and I want to wish them a fantastic school year to every student, teacher, administrator, and staff member. And your hard work does not go unnoticed. Mr. Witt is our resident school district employee here, and I want to wish him good luck in the upcoming year, so. Moving on, I wanted to give an update on the parking garage. Phase one, as you can see, some of the work has been done off of Washington Street. This is the lower part of the garage. I believe we're waiting on some final utility work by Orange and Rockland before they go into the next part of this phase one project. We're hoping to pick up, or anticipating to pick up about 80, 80 spots. When you, when you look at the site, you can see the, it's really coming together. And so I wanted to make sure that the public was made aware of that. We did lose temporarily a row of parking in the back, as you can see. So please be aware when you, if you're in that lot, make sure you take note of where you're parking your car. Also, the city court expansion is on schedule to be completed in December. As you know, both of our courts will be moving over to the South Street project. It's funded with, originally through an acquisition grant of Assemblywoman Aileen Gunther at the time, and Senator Scoofus was able to bring in $3 million towards this project. And the project came to about a total of $6 million of construction. So we'll have both courts relocating from the city of Middletown Police Station, and that will then become part of municipal government, primarily the city of Middletown Police Department expansion and movement from the basement offices up to the first floor and a much more welcoming area for the police to handle base, daily basis for the public. We're also proud to announce that the city has been the recipient of another grant through Senator Scoofus. We, part of this campaign, it's called the National Fitness Campaign, in which the company, the insurance company, MVP, has a grant program. They combined that grant program with a quarter of a million dollar grant through Senator Scoofus's office. MVP has a $40,000 grant. It's the installation of this equipment here. We're looking and targeted with the help of Ray Lynn and her staff, Maple Hill Park, section of Maple Hill. And that grant has been approved by MVP. The paperwork came in today through Scoofus's office, and we'll be moving forward on that. And if I understand, it'll be a much quicker process than the splash pad, which we are now in the final stages of the splash pad. We hope to have that completed, all the paperwork completed, very shortly, and that project will be up and running for 2026. Some events to invite you to, that back to school, the community barbecue on September 6th, inviting the public. It's called It Takes a Village. It's back to school community barbecue. It's conjunction with the city of Middletown and the Middletown Recreation and Parks. It's activity, food, drinks, family fun. And I know the committee that does, that puts it on, co-sponsors it with the city. You can see all the co-sponsors on the bottom. I know there's giveaways for the kids for back to school items, so if there's an interest, please attend. It usually is very well attended. And then it must be barbecue month, because then at September 20th, Senator Scoofus will be hosting a barbecue in Erie Way Park in the back. Again, it will be a free barbecue, food and beverage. We are a co-sponsor as the city. The senator has, has, I think, threw $10,000 into this program. And basically, it's to make an awareness of community services. It's a community resource fair, just an outdoor resource fair. They have a lot of vendors that usually come, and it's very informative, and also you can grab a hamburger or a hot dog. But the senator is, I think this is his second or third year in a row doing it here in the city of Middletown, and we're looking forward to that celebration once again. Summer's over now, and a lot of the festivals and fairs that we usually see are wrapping up, and, but some of them for us are just beginning. So we're just beginning to celebrate the city's diversity. And September 27th and 28th, for example, there's an arts culture festival at the Middletown Community Campus. It will have different ethnic groups featured there. It's put on by the Asian American Community Alliance and Northern University. They have stage performers, artists in crafts. There's a whole bunch of things that will be going on at the community campus, and I believe they're gonna have some of their buildings open. So if the public would like to see what's going on at the college, you'll be able to see it firsthand. It's expected to be a well-attended event, and we look forward to seeing you there. Also, on Saturday, October 4th, the first Hispanic Heritage Celebration will be held at the Mulberry House. And vendors can contact, and act, can also contact Julissa at the, at Mulberry House. The number is on the screen. If they're interested, it's from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. The city, of course, is providing facility, and Mulberry House is providing activity. And we're looking forward to, again, another nice event, which that leads us into Discover America, which is something that we have been working on for the last month or so. And it's a celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month, which, as you know, begins September 15th and runs till October 15th. It's also, we in the city here will be declaring that period of time, September 15th through October 15th, as National Hispanic Heritage Month here in the city of Middletown. This is a month of an opportunity, an opportunity to celebrate the rich histories, cultures, and contributions of the Hispanic and Latino Americans who strengthen the fabric of our community. National Hispanic Heritage Month ends around Columbus Day, and this year we will be celebrating with our Discover American Festival, as I just mentioned, in the downtown area, highlighting Hispanic culture, history, and community. Coincidentally, for Mr. Massey's sake, it's also important to know that that's Columbus Day weekend, the, the Sunday, the October 12th. And so it's a three-day weekend, so we will be doing these celebrations of all different cultures in our downtown, but focusing on Hispanic culture and history. So from our local businesses, businesses to our schools, from the arts to the public service, the impact of the Hispanic Americans is felt across every corner of our city. As you know, the Latino and Hispanic culture or races are the fastest-growing group in our community, and let's take time to recognize all their achievements, honor our diversity in the city, and commit to building an inclusive community where everyone can thrive, as we have been doing. So National Hispanic Heritage Month will be September 15th through October 15th here in the city. And that's all I have at this time. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to address them for you.
Any question for the mayor? Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. I just want to mention the Saturday, October 4th, that's 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at Mulberry House. That's also the day, I believe, the Seventh Day Adventist Church is doing their parade on Highland Avenue.
Yes.
So if people are going down to Mulberry House, they should be aware of it. I'm not sure exactly what the time that parade takes place, but you might have to find a different way to go down.
I don't think, it's not, it's not gonna be a major street closure on Highland Avenue. It's not gonna be here for a long period of time. It's just a march.
Just a march.
Yeah, it's a march from, from the church, I believe, to the Matties Diner area, if I recall right. We'll make sure the notice gets out to the public on that.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Johnson?
Thank you. A couple of things. First of all, in your first half of your comments, congratulations to you and the staff. Those are all major improvements on major initiatives, and we all look forward to them coming to fruition, but that's a, that's a pretty good array of things that are moving forward. With respect to the celebration of diversity, we should do that, especially in this country where diversity has become somewhat of a questionable attribute. So on behalf of all of us on the council, I want to thank you for making sure that all these things are happening, because in a lot of places in America, the exact opposite is happening. So thank you.
That's welcome. So true.
Anyone else? All right, thank you, mayor. Remarks of department heads, economic development?
Good evening, everyone. Just update you, it's been a fantastic summer in our city and in downtown with our summer concerts and farmer's market and all the events. And I just want to give a shout out, kudos to my staff, the team that, you know, is there for these events and helping put it together. And now we're looking forward to all the fall events and activities. And with also at the Paramount Theater, the lineup for the fall season, you each got one of these on your desk, but they are gonna be, going out to 14,000 residents as a mailer, so this is going out, reaching out to everybody to announce the upcoming shows at, at the theater this fall and Christmas season. And with that, that's all I have for tonight, if anybody has any questions.
Any question for Maria? Thank you, Maria. DPW Commissioner?
Good evening. We'll start off with our reservoirs for Alderman Massey. We are at, we're at 87% full. The rain has not been helping, but we're holding our own 87% full of our reservoirs. Capital projects, the mayor updated you on the court, on the parking garage, parking garage, absolutely there's progress, but Orange and Rockland, because I know they listen to this, to us, they've been dragging the project and not getting the utility lines out of the way as well as, as fast as they need to. So we urge them to help us out and expedite moving the power lines out of the way so that the G C can get going. The other project we just signed with the approval of the mayor, Leonora signed the funding application for the eight and a half million dollars from EFC for the raw water lines phase one. That will include about four and a half million dollars grant from the New York State Environmental Facility Corporation, and the balance of it, about three-plus million dollars is gonna be money funded through the, not, borrowed through the city revolving fund, and the city, of course, will have to pay it back. And there's about a million dollar from Congressman, through Congressman Pat Ryan, through the EPA. So that was signed last week. The deadline was Monday, and that paperwork went in. And the design work has started, slowed down until we finalized the grants and the funding, and now it's being, in the process of being finalized, then we're gonna be moving full speed ahead with that project. The water line, the 24-inch low-pressure water line, that is also funded through the effort of Congressman Pat Ryan as well. That design is progressing as well for replacing that water line from the water treatment plant down to about Oliver Avenue, or as close as we can to get, as, as close as we can get to Oliver Avenue with the three and a half million dollars that's available for us. Apart, also the roof project for the, roof replacement project for the water garage and for the street department garage, they're being finalized for the mayor to sign, and then hopefully we'll start construction right away. And with that, I will conclude my remarks. If you have any questions?
Question for Jacob? Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
Superintendent Recreation?
Good evening, everyone. Summer is done. Camps are done, pools are closed, playground programs are closed. I'm happy about that. Onto the fall. Onto the fall. I handed out everyone a packet of all our fall programming coming up. Selena's and Nicole have been working very hard at the end of the summer to get all the dates out. We usually have been going session by session with dates, but they were able to work with our instructors to get multiple classes out and listed and registration open, so families know if they can't make the first two weeks in September, then there's the option for October and November programming. So big kudos to Nicole and Selena's who worked very hard with our instructors on getting as many dates open and out for the fall for all of our programming. Just a few things to mention, the youth boxing clinic, we have pickleball for 18 and older, youth open gym, that is one of our free programs, that's funded by the Youth Bureau, youth soccer, the fitness program for adults, Rising Stars Basketball Clinic, yoga, adult volleyball open play, youth open gym for a different age group, but that's a free program, art classes, soccer for the little kids, lacrosse clinics, our boxing, that is year-round, we also do boxing clinics. A lot of families have let us know that they can't make it during the week, and they want to, still want to train and do boxing, so we started doing weekend clinics. So those are very highly well-attended for adult and youth also. We have free music classes during the week for the little ones, free storytime Come Alive during the week for the little ones. So as you can see, we, we're nonstop all year round. This fitness court that you have in front of you for the grant, we are very excited for that. Coach Darrellen, who is one of our instructors, told her about it, and she is ready to get out there and lead some courses and do our youth programming. Selena's is ready to program some of our youth fitness classes there in the evenings once it's up. So we're very excited and looking forward to this fitness campaign and this fitness thing that we're gonna get. Any questions?
Questions, Alderman Witt?
Thank you. First of all, thank you and congratulations on all the great work of your department and your team. One of the things, I had a chance to speak with Nicole and Selena's last week, and they were mentioning that you folks are constantly taking a look at everything and seeing what's working, what's not working, seeing what we can do to try to grab more people, and it's been like that for years. So thank you very much for that. My, my question is, and I was thinking about this, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, is, but how many do you think in the summer program, college-age kids or younger are employed? Because I've got to think this was, for some of these, their first job.
Yes, yes. For, I would, my guesstimate would be about 50 to 60 high school and college-age youth and young adults that we employ over the summer. A lot for our sports camp, it is a, we get the kids who have been going to camp since the age of six, and soon as they're 16 and old enough to work sports camp, they're applying. It's a hard transition, especially for, we love hiring athletes because it's a sports camp, so the majority of the activities that we do are sports-related. And if you were an athlete or ever once trying to transition into coaching, and it's a tough transition, but with our adults that we have there, they do an excellent job of helping the youth transition, and our adults that we have in the office that are overseeing the programs do an excellent job of helping the youth who are working in our playgrounds and, because like you said, a lot of them, this is their first job, so it's, it's hard. And we're noticing a lot of the soft skills, we are starting to take for granted that we all have, and we all grew up learning that today's youth are, they're not coming to us with those soft skills. So it's teaching them how to be counselors and what's appropriate, what's inappropriate, and how to do things the right way.
Thank you very much. I never would have thought it was that high, but that is an added benefit to all these programs, so thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? Thank you, Ray Lynn. Police Chief?
Good evening. Just a quick reminder with school starting, asking our residents to be patient, give some grace to the other parents. Sometimes it's the first time parents dropping their, their loved one off at a school, sometimes it's just old habit, but people seem to get impatient, and I know the first couple of days are very hectic, so we do ask for some grace and some patience from our parents bringing their children in. Also, this year we have new SROs in almost all the schools, so I encourage all the families and students to engage in those, with those SROs, learn who they are, and welcome them and build that rapport with them. Other than that, I have nothing unless you have questions for me.
Any question for Police Chief? Thank you, Chief. Senior Director?
Hello, good evening to everybody. I think this is my first time in a while. I just wanted to say that we have a lot of things happening in the senior center. I know we're kind of like the hidden gem in the senior, in the city of Middletown, but we are wrapping up our summer as well. We have a end-of-summer cookout on September 17th. We then have our, October 3rd is our health fair, all are welcome in the community, it's from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And then, of course, October 4th is our Hispanic Heritage Celebration. The seniors are very excited. This is our first time. We've had a lot of firsts this year, so we're excited about all the new programs that we're doing as well. And that's it. Anybody else have any questions for me?
Any questions? Thank you. City Clerk?
Good evening, everybody. Just one last reminder, citywide yard sale is just over a week away. We have opened up spots at Erie Way Park for anybody who doesn't want to participate at their home. There is availability left at Erie Way Park. You can register through the website, MiddletownNY.gov. And please remember that the event is rain or shine, so let's hope for some great weather. Thank you.
Any questions for the city clerk? All right. Marks of Alderman, Alderman Massey. Alderman Witt?
Thank you. Just a reminder to the residents of the first ward that Labor Day affects the garbage and the recycling, so please put the garbage out Thursday night, not Wednesday, and then recycling Friday night, not Thursday. And just sort of really quickly on the first day of school tomorrow, congratulations to everyone going back and heading back, and to our families of our council members who have children attending. Miguel, I think you're finally done, right?
No more.
You're good. Good for you. Just one thing I wanted to mention to kind of piggyback on, on what the mayor and the chief, they were saying, is that, and this is kind of relevant for a few days in case people don't see this right away. A lot of times on these first days, there's delays in the buses leaving in the afternoon, so, and a lot of times it's because some of these buses have to take three trips in an afternoon, so it starts at the high school and the middle schools, and then if something happens where there's delay, that affects the next level of things. So we're going to be sharing on the district Facebook page and on the main page when buses are departing relative to their schedule. So if the high school is five minutes late, that's what it'll say. So it's sort of, it's not so much of an issue at the older levels, but when you get to like Presidential Park and Maple Hill and Carter, it does impact families. So please be patient, and, but you will see that, that information. We're working closely with Dan Higby, who we all know is a fine community member and helpful resource for this, as well as the principals. So thank you very much. That's where it'll be.
Alderman Green?
Thank you. Yes, I have an excited first grader ready to rock and roll tomorrow morning. Hopefully he's asleep by now. I just want to piggyback on that. Everyone, please, again, just be careful when you're driving tomorrow and just throughout the whole school year, watch for kids who might hide behind a car or run out, and just follow those bus safety rules of, don't run those stop signs that are out. I know it's sometimes easy to have them in your peripheral vision and just drive through, but please, exercise caution around, around the area. Thanks.
Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. We do have a second ward constituents meeting. That'll be next Monday, I think that's September 9th at 7:00, 7:00 p.m., right here in the council chambers. Sending the National Guard into Washington, DC, I just want to tell a little personal anecdote. anecdote, because I lived in DC, I went to school, George Washington, got my two degrees there, but I lived on a motorcycle, because in Washington, there's no point in having a car, because you can't park where you're going and you can't park when you get back. So my motorcycle, it was actually three different ones, and for four years, the motorcycle was just parked on the streets of Washington, DC, and I was fine. In 1968, I went down to Austin, Texas, the University of Texas, and in three weeks, my motorcycle was stolen and my laundry was stolen. So I don't think of Washington, DC as needing National Guard, and I, I, you know, we, what the concern in DC was, would DC ever have statehood? And it's, it's got a higher population than Wyoming or Vermont, it's got almost as many people as South Dakota and North Dakota, and instead of statehood, well, it's been, it's been taken over, so that, that really gets to me. And I just want to mention the courthouse, since the mayor mentioned that we will be moving the court over there, but that courthouse exists only because of Joe DiStefano. I mean, that was his project, and that was his baby, and that's why we have it. So I, I wanted to at least get that in, and there's, there's so much, every, every day you wake up and you get sick because what's going on in Gaza is just horrendous starvation and just killing reporters, killing independent aid people, killing anyone who walks, and then now taking it over, so have to mention it. Thank you.
Alden Ray?
Good evening. I just want to wish everyone a very safe and happy first day back at school. I have missed my students terribly this last month, so I'm actually very excited to see everybody tomorrow. Parents, be patient, be, you know, understanding, the schools have an epic task of getting thousands of kids exactly where they belong this week, and that is a great undertaking of being boots-on-the-ground people in what they do every day, so give them grace, and I hope it's a wonderful week.
Alden Johnson?
Quite the potpourri. Texas, tell us how you really feel, but we'll let that one lie. So going down the memory lane, when we sent our first child, who's now 47, but when we sent her on the first week of kindergarten, we didn't have such sophisticated communication, and that school bus was 45 minutes late coming home, and you couldn't call into the school at that time, and it was very nerve-wracking as to where, on that particular day, there was a behavior issue, and the bus driver brought the bus back to the school, but we had no way. So now it's like an airport. I can dial in and say, okay, I have a five-minute delay at Gate 17, I can have another cup of coffee, so I appreciate that. I had one other question for the mayor, if I might, if I have the permission of the chair. Mayor, I had one other question, when you talked about the liquor license and the 80/20 ratio, is that monitored, or that could change, right, over time, the 80% to 20%?
Yeah, but you, it's basically a standard in the restaurant industry with, with insurance.
I see.
So that's, so there are annual reports that are filed with, with your insurance companies that show a ratio.
Oh, I see.
Alcohol sales versus food and soft beverage sales. But we'll develop those guidelines and rules.
So obviously it is monitored, whether they choose to or not.
Well, it won't affect the license, but your, one important factor here is the churches have to agree, and they're going into that with a clear understanding. Sometimes a church in a downtown urban setting recognizes that they're impacting the properties in the vicinity for the potential of use, you know, utilizing as a, for the person's, whatever use they wanted to have it. So in this case, the, there were two or three churches that had to sign off, all did, doesn't mean they have to sign off in the future, but if, your question is, if they go below that 80/20 ratio?
Yes.
Can we switch it back? No.
Okay.
Right, those are guidelines to get there, and that's why the practice of having a multi-year relationship with the business owner came into, came into consideration.
And how many years is that, for, for now? I missed that part of it. Is that like a five-year thing or a two-year?
Well, that, that's the guideline that we established unilaterally on this one, but on the three applications, but going forward, if the council wanted to adopt a policy, that would be a recommendation. But we're still unclear on the state side on what they need.
I see.
They don't need a formal resolution from the council in order to process the application. They just need a contact from myself.
Tasset approval.
But absolutely written comment from the churches, and then the state legislator carries the bill. It's, like I said, it's not a rule of the, or a law, it's a special legislation that they bring on behalf of that individual business owner.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yep.
That's all I have.
Alden Jean-François?
Yes, good evening. On behalf of the Fourth Ward constituents, and Spire and I want to thank DPW, especially the Street Department, for doing a great job with the high grass over the summer, especially the city owns property. You guys have been doing a great job keeping up with that. Thank you so much. Maria, you and your staff are doing a great job over the summer. Thank you for the summer program. Can't wait for the fall. Ray Lynn, and you always go above and beyond, you and your staff, so we appreciate everything that you do. All right, thank you so much.
Alden Tobin?
Yeah, I'd like to just echo the great program in crossing from little kids to seniors and to our adults that is available in our, in our city, and you guys are working really hard on it, so it's greatly appreciated. And also, our Fourth Ward constituent meeting is this Saturday, 10:00 AM, at City Hall, if anybody's interested.
Okay, new business.
Good evening. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin authorizing the acceptance of additional stop DWI High Visibility Engagement Enforcement funding for 2025.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Ray, in discussion. Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey authorizing a transfer within the police department's 2025 budget.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Johnson, in discussion. Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson authorizing the return of federal emergency management funds.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Jean-François, in discussion. Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Green authorizing revised agreement with Fusco Engineering for Design, Construction, Management, and Incidental Services for the ONW project.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Ray, in discussion. Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Ray authorizing a transfer within the Department of Public Works budget for a paint striping machine.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ray, seconded by Alderman Jean-François, in discussion. Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner authorizing a transfer within the Department of Public Works budget for additional signage and painting.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Green, in discussion. Aldman Kleiner?
Thank you. This, this was necessitated by the tariffs, and if there's anyone foolish enough to still think that the country, the tariff is against, pays for the tariff, we'll let this wake you up a little bit, and, and this was from Glencoe Supply, and you'll find it in the packet, it's in the material, if you look at the agenda packet, and it says, "To our valued customers, President Trump announced the increase of U.S. Section 232 tariffs on aluminum from 25% to 50% effective June 4th. This significant tariff adjustment directly impacts aluminum materials that are fundamental to our core aluminum sign and blanks products." So their aluminum materials are expected to increase by 15 to 25%, depending on the specific aluminum project, and that's why the original budget was not sufficient to cover this. That's a direct effect. Thank you.
Anyone else? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin authorizing partial street closure of Union Street for Senator Scoofus's annual community resource fair and barbecue.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Jean-François, in discussion. Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson authorizing street closures at the community campus for the 2025 Arts and Cultural Festival.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Green, in discussion. Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?